The meeting of the Falmouth Public Schools to order for December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting, but it can be viewed live on channel fourteen and a recording of this meeting can be viewed on YouTube. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to our republic, which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any month member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, please notify me by raising the hand icon on your screen, and I will notify the public for the Massachusetts Public Meeting laws. Do we have anyone who is making a recording tonight? Hi, do you? Thank you. Mission and vision. Let's ask Kelly, would you like to read the mission and vision?
The Falmouth Public Schools' mission is that our Falmouth Public Schools create world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are our future goals with curiosity and resiliency. Our vision is that Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners participate in a community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Excellent. Thank you, Kelly. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to the open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k twelve dot ma dot us. Do we have any public comments tonight? Mr. Goodhigh, I see your hand is up. You're muted. Hi, Paul. Let's try one more time. You're still muted. Say that again.
He put his hand up a little bit.
Oh, so Paul, if you're, are you recording or are you public comment? If you're, if you're just recording, you can put your hand down. Okay, yeah, exactly. Is there anyone, is there anyone else for public comment this evening? Okay, seeing, we'll go to the first item on our agenda. Paul, do you have a public comment? Okay. So you can always email us if there's anything else that you'd like to share this evening. First item on our agenda is an update from health agent and school physician. Let's see if we are here. We're not here yet. Okay. That's okay. Would you like to go to the presentation and leave that? So we're still waiting for a few attendees this evening. So we're actually going to jump a few items on our agenda, and we're going to speak on the French exchange field trip for two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three, and we will loop back to the other items later. Don't worry.
Yes, and are we promoting Susan?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. So the, this, if you remember, the French exchange group was planning a trip to France. It was April of two thousand and twenty when we had to go down and lockdown, and they were unable to attend. And so this is the exact same trip, but not for this year. We're looking at the April of two thousand and twenty-three. Oh, plan, but in order for them to start fundraising for the trip, they need to know well in advance if it's going to be a possibility. So Susan, I don't know if you'd like to add anything about the field trip?
Hello, thank you. Yeah, the, the major reason is to try because the French travel to us in usually October, and that is their proposed plan. If, if everything moves forward, they need to have a little bit more time to get their reservations and everything, and so that's why we ask so far in advance of when we travel, because it is a school-to-school, family-to-family exchange. And so we're looking to make it work for them. And I waited, when I put in the proposal, it was in the week that our country opened the borders to fully vaccinated Europeans. And so that was why I submitted it in November. So I figured it was worth giving you the chance to consider if that is something that we would like to do. And I know I have some students who are interested, but I haven't talked about it much because there's so much uncertainty in the world with what's going on. But I figured it was better to ask you now to see if that is something that we can continue to do.
Any questions or comments on this trip? Terry, I'd like to make a motion to accept this trip, but with a, an amendment.
What is the amendment?
The amendment is I would like to postpone the vote until March. So that is after the winter, because we have to look at both sides of the Atlantic. What's going on with the European Union? And, I mean, the winter seems to bring forth the most issues, if there are issues. So rather than say yes and then have to disappoint the kids, I think three months are marked would give the time for the French students and us to look things a little bit. Still gives them a year, more than a year and a half. And so I just think we ought to postpone it a bit till after the winter.
So just to, just to circle back, so your, your motion is that we approve this trip or we delay it until March?
That we delay until March.
Okay.
Delay the vote until March.
Is there a second for that motion to delay the trip, to delay discussion of this trip until March? So if we're talking about delaying the field, this conversation until March, how would that delay or impede your ability to raise funds for this trip?
You know, I, I don't really know, because, you know, fundraising in the time of COVID is, is quite difficult. Some of, you know, what we do, it would, a lot of it comes from student tuition that is there, and because I haven't even approached it with the kids, I don't know. Sort of what there is, I was able, it took a bit of time, but after the, the cancellation of the trip in two thousand and twenty, this past May, June, I was able to refund the last of the money that I had held back for, you know, what we had looked at was for expenses that we had paid out. But once I got reimbursed, I did pay back the kids full, and though they did have an experience when we hosted that fall. And so I have no idea what prices might be and what ability to pay with our families would be. I, the, you know, as I said, the biggest thing is for me to recruit kids and then to allow the French to do the same and see if, if both sides of the Atlantic have the approval. You know, they, they will be seeking the approval in January. But I know that in France, they have started some other exchanges. You know, they have a slightly different system of what they can do.
I appreciate, yeah, thank you for that, Leah.
Does, does that make sense?
It does. Thank you.
Okay.
I just think we're now seeing a trend of what kind of COVID is looking like, and there's, it's definitely going up and down. I don't think that delaying this is going to, there still could be a spike at a point. I think that, you know, obviously, there's the contingency of COVID with this. So I, I would feel comfortable putting a motion forward without a delay today with, obviously, you know, health concerns. Right, COVID. Okay, so because the First Amendment did not have a second, there is room for a second motion. And Leah, would you like to make that motion? Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the French exchange program in two thousand and twenty-three with the contingency of health and safety. Concerns, thank you. Is there a second for that?
With the contingency for what now?
Health and safety. Is there a second for Leah's motion to approve the trip with contingencies of health and safety?
I'll second it. And I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, okay, great. So Sue, thank you for taking us on after, you know, such a, a, just absolutely gut-wrenching result last time. It was horrible. It was like our first entrance into the many, you know, disappointments of COVID. And so thank you for that. But also, I'm wondering, you know, it, now having been through that whole cancellation process and trying to refund, is there a way to book it such that if the school committee or the superintendent, you know, that sort of last minute has to say like, this is, you know, COVID has gotten crazy and we have to pull the plug again, is there any way to ensure that kids can get a refund or at least families aren't taking a huge hit?
Yeah, well, again, they didn't end up taking
Yeah.
any kind of a hit. It just, it's a hundred and fifty dollars that I didn't have to give back was waiting for the French. I know when we met that March, it was waiting for them to reimburse me for things that I had paid for that would have been sort of equalized when we traveled. And they were hit, you know, quite a bit in their administration with COVID. And so that was why it took them almost a year to refund what they owed, but they did. So anyway, what I have found, because I do the plans myself with the airlines, you know, at first, they had said when we canceled the last time that I was going to have to pay the hundred-dollar deposit that was put on each ticket. And then the day after I canceled the tickets, they wrote back and said, oh, with all that's going on with the pandemic, we're going to refund you the rest of that. And so that was why I could refund the kids all but about a hundred and fifty dollars waiting for, because I hadn't had to pay it out. We were looking at the timing, because you have to pay the ticket about a month in advance. So there's all of that. There were a few funds that we didn't get back. But again, because of what we spent for them ahead of time, you know, I still had a little bit of leeway, and that was how it was, how it all worked out. So assuming that I continue on that same path of making all the reservations and things myself, I think that, you know, given what we look at, it would be hard. But I think, you know, needing to be upfront with families as I recruit and work with them to try to figure out how we can run this and keep everyone as safe as possible. You know, realizing that the same thing could happen the month before we would travel in two thousand and twenty-three. You know, but keeping a little bit of optimism that things may be a little bit better by then. You know, I don't know. I wish I had a crystal ball, and I'm sure.
My main question or concern is just making sure that families are aware of which pieces could be potentially refunded, which pieces are not refundable, and that, you know, any extra precautions that can be taken to make sure that pieces are refundable, I think are really important, because, you know, we all want to hope that we'll be past COVID, but I don't think we will be. There's still going to be, so that was my main concern. So.
Yeah, I have also in the past done traveler's insurance. I was not able to get it before the, the trip in two thousand and twenty, because the world had started kind of unraveling at that point. But I would certainly look into that as a, as a possibility, depending on the price anymore with that, too.
Thank you. Okay, Andrew, you have a question.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify when we, the notion has, you know, with the caveat of the health and safety. So do we need to be specific on that? I just kind of want to have a better understanding of what that means.
Good question. So let's build in the COVID protocol restrictions concerns, I think. Yes, we should tie that specifically to COVID. Yeah, we did that with New York. Correct, yeah, yeah. But that aligns to whatever that. Yeah, exactly. And Bill, you had a question?
Yeah, um, a couple of things. First of all, again, thank you for putting the time in to do this for the kids. I did the exchange when I was in high school, and it's a, it's probably one of my best memories from being in high school. And, and having planned trips for young people, I understand the need to do this, you know, well in advance, but at least know if you, if you have the green light to plan it. There's a lot of details that are going to come up in the meantime, and we can't predict whether viruses or anything else going on. But I, I certainly appreciate your need for at least knowing whether or not you should put the work into it. So I just want to say thank you for putting that together and then being willing to put that work in, even though there is the uncertainty for sixteen months from now to give these kids that, that kind of experience that they will remember someday when they're as old as me. So I appreciate that.
Wonderful. Any other questions or comments? Leah? One comment, just, I, I assume that there will be very similar protocols that there are now, but around testing, just, you know, having the students when they're going and when they're coming back, obviously, you know, be tested, but I think that that will be part of the protocols at that point. So we just say COVID protocol. Yep, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, to travel in the European Union, you know, everyone would need to be fully vaccinated. You know, that's one of the caveats that has to go in now, so.
Thank you. So the motion is on the table to approve this trip, and again, the language surrounding pursuant to DUCI guidelines and COVID protocol for two thousand and twenty-three. So it's going to be a roll called, oh, Leah, I'm sorry. I just, is that in here that they have to be vaccinated? Because I do think that's an important piece that we make sure is padded.
Currently.
It's current. Okay, just that for this proposal, it is required for the students to be fully vaccinated.
It's not, it's not, no. I don't know what it's going to be in two thousand and twenty-three, right? I mean, that's what it currently is. I mean, Susan can clarify if that's going to be what she's asking us to put in place, but it is not a current requirement.
To travel in Europe, that is a requirement.
Currently, but we don't know when it'll be twenty-three. So it was not part of the paper.
As long as we're, as long as we're on COVID.
That's what I was saying. Yeah.
As long as we're, we have the COVID protocol state-stated, I think that kind of covers most everything.
I would agree.
Change, and I, I think it would also be good if we get an update in six months or whatever, because I think we're going to need to see how many kids are interested in the development of funding and how we are in the world with COVID, right? So I, I think this needs to be upgraded throughout time.
Additional comments, just I, because this isn't our COVID protocol, that's just my concern. So I think that it has to actually go a little bit beyond just our, we're talking about our COVID DUCI protocol. That was what we typically refer to. But this is, you know, taking into account all COVID protocol for the European Union and, right? Yeah. Because that's, so it's a little bit broader, bigger than just looking at our DUCI. Right, and, and the challenge is that we're looking at two thousand and twenty-three, right? So we don't necessarily know what the. So maybe we just say kind of broadly, COVID protocol that pertains to this trip. Sure. Okay. Yeah. I would prefer that than language about vaccination. Yes, exactly.
No.
Yeah, we don't want to go there.
I think it could be problematic, depending on, because there's often different ones for different places, and which one takes precedent at any given time.
Exactly.
Right, the district might have a protocol, but the EU might be different. And so I guess.
Yeah, we would have to match EU where they're going there, and they, you know, they would need to be able to get into the country following.
Well, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. But I think that gives us enough to be with. Well, and I like Bill's suggestion that we have updates, because it is so far in advance that we can definitely, you know, touch base and see where this trip is going. So with that being said, we have a motion and a second, and it's a roll called vote, so.
Disappointed where my thing was, is just gone, right? We don't have.
Because we don't have a second.
I just want to make sure the rules are.
Yeah. So starting with Lisa.
Yes.
Phil Ryder.
Ryder, yes.
Terry Maderas. Yes. Kelly. Sorry, well, yes. Andrew. Andrew, yes. Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill Dorfman, yes.
And Natalie Calatholz, also a yes. So thank you, Susan, for joining us tonight. We look forward to hearing more about this trip.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful holiday, Susan.
You, too. Thank you so much. Okay, so we're going to actually loop back to the first item on our agenda, which was an update from the health agents and school physicians. So I see Scott. Hi, Scott.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, thank you. And Dr. Parkinson.
You guys ready?
Yes, we're all set. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, I was off the set. It's the last day before Christmas. My wife and I have the same day off, so we went out shopping. So I'm in the car. As far as cases go, it's not surprising. It's, will probably be, I think we're just under sixty for the week as of this morning. So it's going to be a week that's going to be between eighty and a hundred cases. It's not surprising. It's the same sort of trajectory that happened this time last year. So your cases are up. Positivity is just under five. That's been holding under five. The states tick over five. I think five point one eight was the last time I looked. Incidence rate, we're in the mid to upper twenties. We're still doing better than most Cape Towns. We have some Cape Towns that are double what we are, but still, that number is a high number for an incidence rate per hundred thousand. That's a daily case rate per hundred thousand. So it's somewhere around nine cases per day is what I've been averaging. Couple of better days, the last couple, but that doesn't necessarily indicate anything. It's not surprising. It's similar to what happened to us right after Thanksgiving last year. So case counts are high. You know, it'll probably stay high for several weeks, probably sometime in January, maybe we work their way down. It's just what it does. It's similar to the last year. It's not the same in last year in terms of we have vaccinations. We've been, you know, we've done, we've done quite a few five to eleven clinics in the schools using the VNA. The VNA is doing that. Barstool County Health was doing the twelve to eighteen's. And the reason for that, if anybody's wondering why, is because I ordered some, I filled out a form and three hundred doses showed up. I wish it was that easy to get doses back in April. And the VNA did the same form, and so we ended up with some that we had, we had doses. And so the VNA is my nursing service that's tied to my PIN number for ordering vaccines. So the VNA does that. So we have both the VNA doing it, the visiting nurses, and also Barstool County doing them as well. So we have the, the choice of the two. And we've been doing quite a few clinics, and we continue to schedule clinics. And I know Lori's department posts them, and they work pretty well. So in terms of that, I think, I think the last number I looked at, we're about thirty-eight percent of the five to eleven-year-olds have had at least one dose. Not a lot have had the second dose, because it's been so soon. So, you know, I, the, the twelve to eighteen range is somewhere in the seventy-ish percent range. So that's the entire town that's not school-based. It's just like I have mine by population, not by those that attend Falmouth Public Schools or not. So case counts are up. It's not surprising, you know, it gets dark, it's cold, you know, it's the holiday season. So that's where we're at. So any questions?
Yeah, any questions for Scott?
I, Kelly. Hi, Scott, I'm wondering, that five percent positivity rate, does that include all the testing that's done for test and stay?
Any, that's all tests that go into the MIIS. So if the test and stay is being submitted into the state, then yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and we have a high testing, testing here, since we have a lot of, we have a lot of long-term care, and we have a fair amount of congregate care, and we have the hospital and a lot of healthcare. There's a lot more routine testing in Falmouth than, let's say, a place that doesn't have a lot of long-term care. So our, we generally have a slightly lower positivity, because we give out slightly more tests than maybe your average town does, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that's why.
Yeah, but I, but I think, I think in terms of school-based, I mean, that's all going to be even throughout, who else? The school systems that are using it. But our positivity is generally maybe slightly lower, just from, you know, in, we also have a lot more opportunity. We have, convenient MD has been awesome and all this, and CVS is in the world and, and doing the testing. So I think for most places, we have, we have plenty of testing, which will lend itself to more tests. Incidence is the biggest thing to use. Look, we, I'm not sugarcoating it, you know, we're getting, we're getting a lot of cases. But hospitalizations aren't what they were with that same caseload last year. So instead of having seventeen in the hospital, you have seven, right? That's sort of a number I'm making up, but you see what I'm saying is that, is that the vaccine works. You can look at it every Thursday, if you want to check the state's dashboard. I also put in my FCTV presentation, there's been a roughly eighty-eight thousand breakthrough cases in the state, which is one point six percent of the population that has been vaccinated. Of those, three percent, three point oh five percent hospitalization rate. That number is actually lower. It was closer to four when they first started to post that. So hospitalizations have definitely not gone up in sort of a percentage. So really, it's been about getting COVID, it's about getting really sick with COVID. I don't, I think, you know, contact tracing, for example, not in your situation. Contact tracing is being sort of downgraded for the general population. It's going to remain the same for schools, congregant care, things of that nature that still need to have the tight contact tracing. You know, it's, it's sort of the state's way of saying, you know, it's, it's endemic, it's here, it's not going to go anywhere. So really, then you start saying the case count isn't, you really want to look at it, it's more the hospitalizations, if that makes sense. It's, it, we're not at a point where this is just going to disappear anytime soon. So if at all, so I think right now it's about the vaccine. Pfizer's got, you know, a lot of promise with the new treatment that they have. The combination of that, too, will be manageable, and we'll get on with life with, you know, COVID in the background. And I think that's just sort of where we're getting at. And the state epidemiologists, it's not contact, the tight contact tracing, calling the contacts and doing that is not going to happen for each individual case, not counting schools, not counting hospitals, and sort of that kind of thing. Then, is that your question?
Thank you. Any other questions for Scott? Dr. Parkinson, please join this conversation as well. Hi there.
You know, normally, I just listen to everything that Scott says and look at his numbers and nod in agreement. You know, tonight, there are, there are a couple of other things. Yeah, I just want to kind of regroup from a, from a clinical point of view, I guess I would say. Clinical, meaning like, what are we actually doing, you know, with the kids, in the schools, what are we not doing, what should we be doing? What's the philosophy? And, you know, and I guess I would start by saying that, as Scott said, if you, if you look at the, the graph of cases this November into early December, and you can almost lay it directly over last November and December in terms of the way it's going up. It's almost superimposable. What's, what's not same is, is the death and hospitalization rate. And, and I think it is really important for us to make sure we have our eyes on what, you know, what we're really trying to prevent, and that, which is those two latter, you know, deaths and hospitalizations. And of course, the point being that, that if you're immunized, your chances of dying from COVID are five times lower than if you're not immunized. If you, you know, at least, depending on which country you look at. So, so, you know, when, when we started this, what we're really trying to do, obviously, keep the kids healthy, keep the families healthy, keep the, you know, keep the community healthy. The outcomes for the community are improving, and it, so it allows, it gives us the leeway to be a little more liberal with what we allow. It allows, gives us the leeway to be a little more liberal with what we allow, you know, in the schools. Being that the school is just kind of a micro environment of the community. So if, you know, if you look at the things that are being done in the schools, um, you know. Uh, I've come around to thinking, well, hand washing is just common courtesy. Um, masks are not easy, but they're manageable. Um, you know, at this point, twenty-one months in or however far we are, you know, social distancing. For this length of time is really, um, is really what's been difficult for people, right? That's the, that's the heaviest lift. That's the most, uh, impact on mental health, on family health. On everything else. And, um, and so, you know, by allowing the kids more contact this year. Uh, you know, I don't have a statistic to back it up, but my sense is that mental health is substantially better than it is, was last year. Um, you know, still not normal by any stretch, but better than it was. Um, you know, I, I just have to come back around to the importance of, of getting the un-immunized immunized, you know. Uh, the multiple comments, including myself saying this, you know, we may not be looking at it, at a. At, at a foreseeable end to this. Well, that's because we don't have enough people immunized. Um, you know, the test and stay program has really allowed a lot of kids to stay in school. We, and we have to look at the toll that that's taking on the people who are, uh, carrying it out. You know, I hear reports of two hundred kids being tested in a school. What that tells me is two hundred kids who aren't immunized, you know? And, and, and we have to, we have to, you know, be frank about the fact that every child from kindergarten up. Uh, and every adult now has the opportunity to be vaccinated. Yes, there's a wait at this particular moment for boosters and what have you. But, you know, we can vaccinate everybody and knowing that your chances of having significant illness are substantially lower. If you're vaccinated, it, it's really difficult to make policy based on people who choose not to do that. And, and, you know, from my perspective, maybe not reasonable. Um, you know, I've been asked, what should we do about particip, about spectators at sporting events? And, you know, that's just another example. Last year was, was a no-go because it wasn't, wasn't safe. Um, you know, obviously, we have to keep the, the students, uh, protected with what they're doing. You know, when they're going to school, but even in sporting events. If I don't want to be with ten thousand other people at the Falmouth Road Race. Because I think it's too many people in one spot, I can choose not to do that. And I think when it comes to spectators. That's why I've come down on the side of saying, get immunized, wear your mask, get your booster if you're eligible for it and can get one. And then, you know, make your own decisions and your risk is gonna be much lower. So, you know, what we're trying to do is, is in this philosophy of saying, okay, well, didn't go away in June of twenty twenty. Um, now we're saying, maybe it's, you know, is it, is it gonna go away? What can we do to make this safe and livable and minimize the risk and maximize the, uh, you know, quality of life for people?
Thank you for that. Um, any questions for Dr. Parkinson? Andrea.
Um, thank you, Dr. Parkinson. That was, um, really great to hear. And I know, um, probably all of us have been hearing from a lot of families. Soon as the incidence rate starts to go up, um, you know, people are quite concerned. And so with all these numbers that we've been hearing, you know, the positivity rate or how many students are in the test and stay. There's just all these numbers. Can you give some advice on which ones are most important to pay attention to? And again, I'm thinking about our families of our students.
Right. So, uh, you know, to me, the most important number is what is the percentage of students who are immunized? That is the one that I am always trying to impact every day. And I know all of the nurses and all of the other providers and. And, you know, people, you know, within the community, that, that's the most important number because that's the one that can move the needle and make it. Uh, you know, make us hope for a time when we don't all have to wear masks. Um, you know, I, I think that, uh, you know, we can still be reassured that the rate of serious illness in young people is low. You know, any serious illness in a young person is not okay and, and, um, but it's still been relatively low. Um, you know, I, I think, uh, you know, this month of discussion without discussing the new variant, you know. Uh, and, and knowing that the risk of spread of that is very high, you know. It seems like the, the, the reality of seeing less cases. Um, with the current immunization rate is, is, isn't practical. Um, the, 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 you know, the. I guess the, um, silver lining of that is that it does appear that the severity of this isn't. Uh, you know, doesn't, isn't jumping out as quite as bad. And so. Again, we have to say, is it the number of infections or is it the number of people hospitalized? Uh, and I think, you know, that, that's important to the entire community because if the number of people hospitalized or in ICU. Is to the point where they have to shut down all the services that are available to people if they go in for whatever reason other than COVID. Then that does impact maybe how the rest of the community has to act in order to get, get it so that, um, you know, the, the, the community as a whole is safe.
So true. Um, the other question I had was, um. I guess I wanted to know what you're seeing, um, in terms of, um, spread. And whether it is, you're saying how it's, um, the, the curves are looking very similar to how they were last winter. Is the spread very similar to, are you seeing that mostly from out of school, um, contacts? Or in school? And if it is in school spread, how do you identify that? What does that look like? Because I think people get concerned about that.
Right. Now, it's, I, I'm glad you brought that up. It's a good question. You know, and, and I, I would say as a preface to my answer, remember that the amount of spread last year. For people who were learning virtually is higher than the, was higher than the amount of spread within school. And so for the people that want to separate everybody home, um, you know. Uh, it appears to be supervised mask-wearing in school is always the safest option. Um, now, having said that, you know, uh, you. I think, uh, the last, as of the end of last week, I think there were three. So far this year, there have been three students who have been identified as school exposures. Where they couldn't exclude the fact that there, that it came from somewhere else. That doesn't mean they came from school. That just means that, that, uh, the, the only place we can see that it comes from might have been school. And so out of all the cases that we've had, you know, that's not zero, but it's very low. And, and so I think that's, uh, you know, it's a tribute to all the work that people are doing. Um, you know, in terms of how, uh, you know, how that all happens, I mean, you know. The school nurses and their, their, their assistants are, you know, they're working so hard with that testing. Uh, test and stay. Um, it, and my, my, my concern is, you know, uh, the. You, you know, everyone's kind of sprinting a marathon within the last month. And that's hard to do, you know? Um, and so I do have concerns about helping to make sure that. People are able to, um, you know, get the, get the support, get the rest, get the break that they need.
Yeah, um, so I, I guess, Dr. Parkinson, this kind of goes with what you were saying before about. You know, really the need to get more younger children vaccinated to really, um, alleviate that kind of. Number of students who are getting the test and stay all the time. So what information or resources would you provide to parents who, who aren't feeling comfortable right now with vaccinating? Young children? Um, what would you recommend?
Well, you know, I, I think that, uh, there are a lot of, there are a lot of good resources. I mean, whether you, you know, if, if you're looking at American Academy of Pediatrics website. If you're, the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia has an excellent, they're one of the leading places in the country in. Um, in, in vaccination, uh, you know, if people don't want to go by this, the CDC. I, I think that the, um, you know, to me, it always comes down to the personal and the local though, you know? Um, I mean, the, the number of people who, um. You know, we've tested and had positive who say, well, I was thinking about getting vaccinated. And, uh, you know, I've been trying to get my head around it and sometimes it's hard to, you know, it. You, you feel like when you're doing nothing, that you're just, you, you're, you're doing nothing, but you're really, uh, making a decision in that, right? And by not doing something is just as much a decision as doing something. Um, but those, those three sites, the American County Pediatrics, the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. Uh, Education Information Center and, uh, Vaccination Information Center and CDC, I mean, they have the most up-to-date, you know? You can go on the CDC website and it will tell you, you know, you can get specific data for children. And, you know, and it's, there's, when you see it at a country level, there is more, you know, um, than, than. Thankfully, you know, we don't see it on a local level, but when you add up everything that happens around the country, you know, you do see some, some negative outcomes in kids. And that's always kissed me, you know, say that we're doing the right thing.
Any other questions for Dr. Parkinson? Okay, and before we stay way away from COVID, I know that you want to share something.
Yeah, so just a couple, I want to follow up, uh, on the latest thing that, uh, Dr. Parkinson, um, just said. Uh, good news, um, Dr. Parkinson, uh, the three still holds as of today, uh, that you mentioned. Uh, we've had a total of twenty-six, uh, students that have been in test and stay that have tested positive. Uh, since the beginning of school, so for the last three months, only three cannot be, uh, attributed to anything. Um, other than it could be school, but as Dr. Parkinson said, it could be anywhere. Um, every, every other case of the twenty-six, there has been an outside, uh, identified exposure. Um, that it's, that it was likely. And so, um, as Dr. Parkinson said, I think, um, it's pretty good. Right, because considering we are testing hundreds of kids. Across all our schools, pretty much all the time. And so, um, that, that's good. The other piece, um, Dr. Parkinson had mentioned about the keeping kids in school. Uh, for the past three months, the school started, um, we've only had sixty-six. Um. Uh, times where, because it could be the same, same child, but, um, sixty-six times where, um, children have stayed home in quarantine. Have chosen that, uh, you know, and instead of staying in and test and stay and stay in school. So just wanted to follow up with a couple, um, data points on that. Um, clinics, um, Scott mentioned the clinics. We're continuing to offer clinics. Um, for our first five to eleven-year-olds. Um, the second dose was last Thursday and Friday. Uh, so in two weeks, they'll be fully vaccinated. Uh, we had two hundred and twelve, uh, students in that age, uh, range. We have another, uh, clinic coming up, um. For the five to, uh, eleven-year-olds, um, that is this Thursday, and then the second dose will be right after the holiday on the sixth. Uh, and then, uh, and that will be an after-school. So we did an in-school and then we're trying to do after-school to, to continue to capture more. We've, um, the Barnstable County, uh, is, uh, holding a clinic for us for the ages twelve and up. Um, that will be, um, on next week, on the twentieth, and then this, uh, second dose will be, uh, in January. Uh, and that includes boosters for the sixteen-year-olds and, and up, uh, and any of our staff members that would like a booster, uh, at that time. So we've already held, uh, one booster clinic, uh, for our staff, um, and that was well, well attended, so. Um, we're trying to offer as many opportunities and I just, I wanted to share the update on where we were with that.
Thank you. Um, any other questions for either Scott or Dr. Parkinson or even Dr.?
Yeah, we asked you.
I'm just, I'm wondering if for the five to eleven-year-olds clinic, if there's still space for families to sign up?
Yes, there is.
Okay, and how many slots are available for that?
Uh, um, I believe it was eighty, um, eighty to a hundred. They did say they would stay later if we had additional people. Um, sign up, so, uh, right now for that hour, I think it's eighty and then we're, we're allowed to add on if we have.
And for interested parents, how do they sign up?
Uh, so there was information sent out from, uh, my office. Uh, Sharon Reed sent the information and it has all the directions. Um, on, the Barnstable County has links and then there's information, um, it is still the paper copy with the V N A for the five to eleven-year-olds. So, um, if not, they can call our office and we will, we will make sure they get the information they need, so.
Sounds good. So if anyone is interested to not sign up, please contact the superintendent's office.
If I can add, can I add something to that?
Sure, Scott.
Well, I mean, Lori may not know this. Um, so the same online registration that the county uses, by the next week or two, the V N A will be online with that as well, so. We can go and have it in one system instead of having two entities do it differently as far as the registration goes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Scott. That is excellent.
Yeah, Barnstable County twelve and up, one, is that only for school? Is that only for this?
For twelve and up, so, um, for students and in staff, if they haven't been vaccinated.
Will be in, where will this be located?
So the.
It's at the high school, the twenty.
Yes.
Right after school.
Right after school.
Okay, so just like the five to eleven-year-olds will be at twelve and up.
Yeah.
Hey, any other questions?
I just want to say, yes, thanks for including the staff for the booster. I think that's awesome.
Yeah, absolutely. Wonderful.
Can I just make one more point while I have the, you know, captive audiences that for parents out there who have students. Who are positive for COVID, once they're done their isolation period, remember the importance of being screened. Uh, by their primary care provider before they return to vigorous sports at the, at the school level, you know, the trainers. Uh, you know, the trainer's gonna make sure that they go through the right protocol, but for, for kids who are in, you know, vigorous activity. Whether it's sports or dance or whatever it is, um, that have had significant COVID, uh, you know. With, you know, several days of fever or what have you. You know, they really should be going through a gradual return. And I, I, you know, I don't want to get into a situation where somebody, uh, gets into difficulty because they tried to jump right back into. Whether it be hockey or travel basketball or whatever the case may be. So just, if in doubt, contact your primary care provider to find out what to do about that.
Yeah, very important point. Thank you for that. Um, as always, thank you both for joining us. This is really helpful information and we appreciate your time. So thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye. Okay, next, presentation of food justice program. I believe that's going to be Andre Price and Ben Harden.
And Matt Lyles.
And, sorry, and.
Sonya is, uh, Dr. Tellier, would you introduce someplace and introduce the program?
Sure. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to share with you, um, the emerging pathway for the food justice program. Um, I'd like to give, uh, special thanks to Mr. Henry St. Julian, Assistant Principal, uh, Falmouth High School. For his leadership and guidance in the development of this student opportunity. Um, he and I together have spent a considerable amount of time, um, talking with Ben, Andre and Matt. To fully understand, uh, the proposed pathway and partnership that will provide a unique opportunity for our students. Um, with members of our community and also to see themselves as remaining in our community beyond their graduation from Falmouth High School. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to welcome, um, Ben Harden, Andre Price and Matt Lyles. To, uh, share information with you on the program. I did see that they were joining us as attendees. But I haven't seen them come through on the panel just yet.
We have a tech, tech issue. Okay, all right, great.
Here they come.
No.
No.
We got Matt.
Hey, everybody. Sorry about that. I got booted off Zoom.
Hi, guys.
Matt Lyles.
Hey, Ben. Hi, Andre.
Hey, Sonya, how you doing?
Well, well, thank you for joining us. I'm gonna turn it right over to you, gave you a little introduction, but I know you have a lot to share, so thank you.
Cool, I'm intrigued to know what you said about us. Anyway, um, so yeah, I'm here, I'm Ben Harden. I'm here with, um, Andre Price and Matt Lyles. Uh, we're the core team with Food Justice Initiative. Uh, we've been working in the last year or so with the, um, public schools, uh, through Dr. Tellier and Henry St. Julian. Uh, to kind of develop this program. Uh, and the program is really all kind of about practical agriculture and the connection. Between that and the racial and climate stories of how, uh, that we've shaped our current food. And future food systems. Um, so basically, the idea is to have a class, uh, at the high school. Uh, where the students can explore the history of racial injustice when it's come to land ownership and food access. and how that kind of like has shaped our society and the access to wealth and healthy food uh in certain parts of our country. Um with climate change, you know, on our doorstep as well, you know, we really need to take a good hard look at uh how the climate shapes what food you can grow in different regions, how that's going to change, how that's going to impact different groups differently. Uh from, you know, wealthy people who can adapt to lower income uh that minority groups who uh are kind of less empowered to be a part of that conversation. So that's going to be kind of like um the kind of the, I'm sorry, I've got here. Got the child wailing me from upstairs, excuse me. Um so uh that's going to be kind of the uh the kind of central narrative we're going to be looking at in a kind of theoretical sense. And the kind of the interesting thing is that we've got a really great case study here on Cape Cod to talk about a range of diverse people in our community who've been here for hundreds, thousands of years. And the way that lands has changed hands has been stolen, has been kind of reappropriated and used in different ways. And for students to think about the climate of Cape Cod and how that's affected what we can grow here and what we might be able to grow in the future. So that's the kind of theoretical side of the class, the kind of more hands-on practical side is that we know we want to really empower students to then, you know, do something about the things they're learning about. And so that's going to involve working on a small scale farm onsite at the high school uh throughout the year to grow various different kinds of crops uh and to think about the cultural importance of those crops and how they might be uh used locally uh in our community. And I think really the key is to really get the students agency um to kind of get them to think about what we want to grow as a community, how we want to distribute the things that we do grow and think about more broadly in our in our space here in Falmouth, how we go about getting food into healthy food into people's bodies. Um, so the kind of provisional kind of starting plan for this is to kind of work through the vocational schools, through the CVTE um and initially have a semesterized class that will kind of give the kind of broad overview of those topics, both the practical and the theoretical side of kind of race, climate and food. Um maybe one section, maybe two, but there'll be kind of cohorts of students in the two, in the two semesters um to take that class. Um the kind of plan from there is to kind of grow this program over the course of a number of years to include uh kind of two oh one kind of year round class, three oh one options, maybe some kind of independent studies and apprenticeships and those kind of things, so that students have the option to come in and take this individual semester as class to kind of get an overview and to think about these topics and to be a part of it. But then students also have an opportunity to kind of build a cohort that kind of move through the years and develop their skills so that we could actually, you know, in a position, be in a position to actually have students who are well trained and well versed in how to kind of create an equitable food future for the Cape. Um and hopefully that, you know, by partnering with local farms and organizations, we can actually provide them with opportunities to be entrepreneurial in developing their own plans for for how to how to change, how to change our community. Um so so far, we've been working with the schools to establish kind of the goals of this program and to kind of build a program description for the course catalog, you know, layout where we might want to put kind of farm infrastructure at the high school. Um what we're currently looking at is to build a a relatively large um hoop house, greenhouse space, a metal framed kind of polythene sided uh structure that will give us some season extensions that we can actually kind of grow throughout the year. Um there's some pretty good techniques to actually keep food in production for most of the year. This is the uh in a complicating factor of trying to grow food during the school year where typically, you know, we we think about this, the growing season on Cape Cod as being May through kind of October. And that's obviously not great for the school system, but um you know, we've got some great opportunities to kind of get some season extension and and have uh food being grown throughout the year. Um we've also been working on other design elements and the budget uh with the school as well to kind of seek different um uh funding sources as well. So we're kind of at a point now where we're kind of, you know, ready to kind of move forward on this, you know, we we thought it'd be is we we're invited tonight to to speak to the school committee and and let you guys know what we're thinking. And kind of next steps for us are, you know, we are the Food Justice Initiative, uh looking to kind of, we're going to be building this relationship with the schools. Uh developing a memorandum of understanding so we can work out how the schools and this or our outside organization will collaborate to kind of make sure that this program has the support it needs, be it funding, curriculum development. Uh you know, uh we're gonna hopefully work to facilitate an advisory group like a lot of the other vocational tracks have at the CVTE department. Uh so we can actually have, you know, students, parents, professionals in the field, working to make sure that we're delivering a really robust program. And also working with a wider group of advisors to actually kind of make sure this program is delivering on its promise of social justice as well as just as not just uh getting food in the ground. Um, that's the basic overview. Matt, Andre, did I miss anything that you wanted to add?
You did not, as far as I can tell. Thank you. Um I will introduce myself. My name's Matt Lyles. I went to Falmouth High School, graduated in two thousand and eleven. Um and still live here because I like it here. So that's one of the aspects of this that's really important to me is uh giving students one more, one more way to see themselves uh sticking around in in their hometown. Housing market aside. Hope that gets better, but um that that's that's a really important part for me. So um my background's in a little bit in education. Lot bit in sustainability studies. Um and FJI has 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 been a project that we've been working on together for a couple of years. So I'm really excited to bring it to you guys here tonight.
Thanks, Matt and Ben. Um Ben, I think you covered all the bases, but uh I will introduce myself as well. I'm Andre Price. I live here in Falmouth. I've been coming to the Cape for about past ten years and I moved here about three, four years ago permanently. Just have a passion for education. My background's in fishery science or environmental science, but uh have some farming experience, some teaching experience. And uh, yeah, we're just hoping that we can deliver something for this community.
That's great. Thank you so much for presenting this to us. Uh is are there any questions for either Andre, Ben or Matt? Leah?
I'm just, I'm so interested in um like how this formed, this group formed and um how long you've been together and.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we've 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 we're pretty close, have been for a number of years now as as friends and colleagues in various capacities. Um, you know, we, I'm I'm an avid home farmer. I'm an environmental science teacher at um the SC Education Association. Um work on the um, I'm the course director of the Partnership Education Program there as well, which is the Woodsaw Diversity Initiatives um program to bring underrepresented students to to Woodsaw. So you know, we we've all been working in various aspects uh in education and thinking about which students have access to what information and and how that's equitably spread out. And I think we're we've all, you know, found Falmouth as home in different ways. Matt was, Matt grew up here, Andre moved here, I moved here ten years ago, you know? And we all appreciate what the what the space this is and what how much it has to offer. I think, you know, this just started to kind of grow as 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 an it was something we wanted to give back and we wanted to make sure that Falmouth was a space where, you know, people had access to equitable opportunities and that we could, you know, do something about climate change in in an education manner.
Terry, I'm wondering, is this um foods justice, is this a unique concept to our state or are there other places in the country that are um moving in this direction? Or where did you get the initial I name for it?
Uh, I mean, I think food justice is certainly something that's starting to kind of chip off people's tongues a little bit more regularly. Um I think, you know, a lot of justice ideas have been coming to the fore recently and that's that's great to see. Um, you know, the Food Justice Initiative was the name that we came up with for our small band that we have right now, where we're moving to kind of formalize our organization and develop a board and a group of advisors uh kind of around this project. Um but certainly, there's many places around the country that are working towards food justice, be it in access to food in in food apartheid regions or through uh promoting and shining spotlights on farmers of color and the inequities that have existed throughout our throughout our food system for for generations. Um so yeah, I think, you know, this is, this is certainly a topic that is being addressed around the country. I don't know of any particular programs that would look exactly like this. I think this could be, you know, relatively unique.
Thank you very much for the the presentation. Um this is some work that's very near and dear to my heart. And I guess maybe my question is more for Sonia in terms of um in the CBT program, like how do those tend to come about? Like, is there um sort of a s- an overall strategy for the different um areas that we have focus on? And what areas we want to add or fill in that program?
Yes, uh we've worked with data from the Workforce Investment Board, um or the Cape and Islands arm of the Workforce Investment Board to have the data to help us develop programs. And that's how our two chapter seventy four programs came to be. Um this is a more unique approach to developing a pathway. Um and it's actually uh part of the early conversations for us. We can see the relationship to the community, the connection to our goals around equity. Um what's a bit of a departure is that this borrows off of three different vocational frameworks uh as well as a couple of the academic disciplines. Um it's a connection to agriculture. It's a connection to um some of the other uh farming related strands uh within the science cluster, but then it also connects a bit with culinary um and makes connections there. So um we're following the outline of a traditional uh CBT program having a one oh one, a two oh one, um a plan over time for uh independent study or independent time um in the small scale farm or in the community farms. Um it's just a bit of a departure because we're blending the the frameworks um and really looking to um Ben, Andre and Matt to continue to bring forward some of the data and help us build out the relationship um to really understand the role that this program can play in our CBT department.
Yeah, um so just some logistical questions. So when, when was the idea of starting this program? Um it sounds like, you know, things need to get kind of built, right, to be able to start it. And then how is it funded?
So, do you want me to take the funding, Sonia? So um if you remember, we talked about um that uh Representative Dylan Fernandez had uh written in earmarked money that a hundred thousand dollars that um the Falmouth Education Foundation are the stewards of, but the money was intended for Falmouth Public Schools. Um and there was um criteria. So um we have uh involved the FEF in in this process uh for some time. Um they, I'm actually waiting to find out right now. Their board meeting is tonight, um started at seven o'clock and they are voting tonight um to approve the funding um uh exactly forty eight thousand tonight um for um to to be able to to get this started and then um more funds as needed if if we if if as we're developing, that's needed. Um in addition, um the advisory board is looking to bring some money to the table. Uh and uh the advisory board still needs to to fully be uh formed, but you heard Ben say that um they are looking. Um they're they're working with us to to be able to um to form that. Um and in addition, and um the Falmouth Public Schools um for the the point four position that we're looking to add um would um fund that piece. So a combination of um partnerships um and community and the school's investment um for this program.
And my my first question was, when would, when?
The time, the timeline is such that, you know, we're we're working to um this the course descriptions going in the catalogs for this year. So it'll be September will be the first run, the first uh running of the semester class.
So Cory, could you explain that again um with the funding? So with the money being held by FEF and voted on tonight, that's not to cover the point four position?
No, so that's Falmouth Public Schools' contribution um to the funds, but the the forty eight thousand um covers um the curriculum, covers um the hoop house that Ben described. Um some equipment that's going to be needed for the program. So that forty eight thousand really covers um tho- those expenses.
And how does the curriculum get developed?
Uh, uh either Ben or Sonia can probably um address that.
Yeah, right now, we're gonna, you know, we're at the Food Justice Initiative, you know, we'd work with the schools or independently to, you know, develop that that uh that curriculum for the for the semester program. And so that was kind of what some of the money was earmarked for uh was personnel time to to work up some of the uh, some of that curriculum.
And Sonia, do you have anything to add to that or?
Just again, in making sure that we're standards aligned, pulling from the vocational frameworks as well as science and social studies frameworks so that we have um an interdisciplinary guide to make sure that we are within um the bounds that the Department of Education sets for us.
So there's uh already been selected um a text and supplemental uh texts as well for for the program. So they are, they have moved to that, to that point. I don't know, Ben or Sonia, if you want to share, share any of that.
Ben, do you want to talk about the core text?
Yeah, sure. There's a text called Farming While Black, which is a uh text by a a black farmer called Leah Peniman um who operates in New York State. And she's been working on a lot of ideas um uh to do with social justice farming. Uh her text is a great um book that covers both the kind of very practical aspects of growing food uh that's culturally appropriate and and in a variety of um ways uh whilst also covering kind of some of the backgrounds of racial injustices and climate issues as well. So it kind of, kind of kind of frames the kind of class quite well. Um in addition to that, you know, we've been working uh as part of this budget that went to FEF was some more, some auxiliary tests, texts as well. Uh things like uh braiding sweetgrass and indigenous peoples' history of the United States. Um stamped and other books that uh and resources that we can use to kind of like frame out the whole picture and give students opportunities to explore things in depth.
Thank you. Phil, I saw your hand up.
What is the uh dollars and cents associated with the point four?
Uh Patrick, um can you speak to that?
I'm estimating thirty thousand dollars.
Because it falls under the CBT E programming, is there any funding through the federal?
Not, not at this time. May- maybe eventually, but it would have to sort of go through a different process.
Okay.
And Terry, okay, two totally um different kind of questions. One, if the equipment breaks down, um are we going to have funds to repair it? We always ask that when we start a new program up. I mean, we get grants and we have people give us money, but if things break down, are we going to be able to, where's that money going to come from to fix things?
I think that's a great question. I think, you know, that's that's part of what we're budgeting as the Food Justice Initiative is to be that support network so that we can actually fundraise and have a pool of money available such to, you know, to kind of move this program forward, but also kind of make sure we're maintaining the resources that we already have. So I think that's going to be a conversation with the schools going forward is to work out, you know, what the balance is there in terms of how we can support that program most effectively monetarily going forward.
Because if we start a program and students are in it and things break down, it's awful if we can't continue it. That was one question. Okay. And the other one is, have you um considered including the Cape Verdean people who um were strawberry growers that helped make Falmouth what it is?
Yeah, absolutely. Barbara Burger has already been a big contributor in terms of the conversations um that we've been having in preparation for this. So yeah, they're going to be well involved in the conversation going forward.
Great. Any, I see off the pan there here, Phil.
The um, the hundred thousand dollars that you mentioned that that could be used for this program? If it was not used for this program, what are some other areas that are under the guidelines of that being applied to?
So it's pretty broad. Um it really talks about um in- ensuring uh students are college and career ready. So it's a broad spectrum. We actually submitted three projects um last week. Uh the, this program, uh the um, it's the social and uh racial justice um muriel. It's um, so this high school students, it's the Clippers for for uh racial and social justice. And they um have an artist coming in and help develop a mural. So that's one of the projects. So um we asked for two thousand dollars to So we asked for $2,000 to pay for the, to secure the artist to work with the students. And another, the third project that we've submitted is around responsive classrooms for our elementary principals, so that they have just a better understanding. We can just improve and enhance on the process that has already been started here. So those are the three that we've submitted so far. They're open for us to submit a, another additional projects through the winter. And then in the spring, the, the funds do have to be extended to the, to the schools this year. So we're still working on it. We want to make sure that whatever we're asking for is really integrated and, you know, aligned with our goals. And working with the FEF, the umbrella of equity, started just being kind of a theme. And so we're looking through that so that we can find areas to, to grow.
Yeah. So I, this, this sounds so wonderful, it really does. And this is not at all against kind of what this is. But I feel like, I, I feel a little blindsided over the process of this where I would have liked to know more about this as you guys were working on it, to get us to a point where we would be ready to put $30,000 into a position. I'm feeling like this is really exciting, but I knew nothing about it. And so getting this in my packet, so. Yeah, I just, I just would like to see a process include us more in the future. Andrea? I think this discussion is making me realize where all the gaps are in my knowledge of how these things come to be and how they operate. Again, Sonia, I think that these questions are probably for you. So I understand that the way this is being described is for a semester class at this point. And so I guess I'm trying to under, but there's, but there's been discussion about growth of the program. So in terms of some of the other pathways, is, what is, is that how they started out with a single class that then developed into a pathway? You know, I don't really know what type of, how, how many FTEs go toward each of those pathways? Like, how does this compare? Because I've only seen them presented as complete packages. This is the first one I've seen start up.
It's a bit of a both-and scenario. In, in many cases, for the seven pathways that we have now, it was a coordination of existing classes. For example, you know, we had a graphics design and then a poster design and an animation. So that pathway, the courses existed, but we had to do some re-articulating and then adjust the curriculum around the vocational framework. In many cases, our programs are one FTE to match one program, where some of the internship opportunities are done within Falmouth High School for students that don't have transportation or don't have a desire to leave the location to have the independent learning. Then we have others, like our television broadcasting, which is two to three courses, depending on demand, in a given semester or year, where it is a, a partial FTE represents the entire pathway. And the students from other opportunities have access to film, school, and community events they can bring back into their work. So there, it, that's why I say it's a bit of a both-and. In the point four, in trying to create at least two different semester offerings in the fall, it would have to be just one as we're building up students. And in the spring, hopefully being able to then repeat the 101 and introduce students to the 201. So we have a growing core of students to help maintain any of the, the plantings that are underway.
And so would, I'm, I'm trying to think about in, in any of the other pathways that are not a full FTE? Are, are there any others that are not a full FTE? I'm just trying to think how this will function, right? If we're looking at this job description here and who might fill that and how they would then fit in with the student community?
Yeah, I think television is the only one that stands out to me right now that's a partial FTE. We do have one instructor or teacher who oversees a complete pathway and also has an opportunity in the day for some additional internship support because it's a employment readiness, an employment skills-focused curriculum, not within the pathway, but assisting and enhancing the experience for all the students hoping to move to an internship who don't feel ready to move directly from their pathway course to that independent experience.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
Kelly? I'm, I'm wondering if we have any sense about whether kids are gonna want to do this? I mean, I think it sounds amazing, but you know, I'm an old lady. So I'm wondering if the, the concept of either the course or the trap or even just the garden component have been vetted with some of our kids?
Ben, I'm a trip, you want to lead in, but I'll start. So in the conversations we've had with Henry St. Julian and talking about how we're socializing this opportunity with students, one of the key pieces was to have very high-level summaries of what the introductory course would be like, available in the course catalog. Because students will be getting that as we go into the new calendar year. And then also being able to make connections in our STEM nine courses. So along the way, we have included Chris Brothers in some of our conversations to make connections both to STEM nine, which is an experience that every grade nine student has at Falmouth High School, but also then looking at the articulation for which students move to environmental science and the relationship that this would provide to that course and that experience.
I'll answer your question. I don't think I, I'm sorry. Oh, I didn't really want to chime in. I was like, I don't know if I understand if kids.
I mean, but today, from my understanding, we haven't actually established any, you know, focus group of students to kind of establish who would do this. You know, I think we're, we're working on the assumption that this is a robust program that is going to be extremely interesting to a lot of students, especially as, you know, social justice is, is very much, you know, what people, what students are thinking about right now. I think, you know, we've got in our plans to make sure we're working closely with, you know, eighth graders coming up from Lawrence School, Guidance Councils of the high school, to make sure that we're kind of, you know, finding the right students to, to come and encouraging to come and, and join us in this program.
I would just, I would love to hear, like, I remember, I don't know how many years ago it was, maybe it was even last year, time doesn't mean anything anymore. But there was like a survey or something that I think went out, or maybe it was even done informally in class. It said, you know, if we were going to offer a course next year in blah, 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 would you maybe be interested? And it was done very informally, so that the kids weren't like, you know, devastated if the course wasn't offered. But I would love to see a survey of, of the students that asked that question and then maybe even asked, you know, if, if we did, or which of these four things would be of particular interest to you as part of that? Because I think that their voice is really important and, you know, it's their class. So we want to make sure that it, it really is meaningful to them. So then my other question is whether or not there's been conversation about connecting this program to all of the school gardens that exist around, around the district already.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, one of the things I see is real potential area for growth here is that, you know, we're going to have some great facilities at the high school to be growing year-round. And that gives the high school is a fantastic opportunity if we can provide some summer school opportunities for younger students to come and spend a week or so at the high school, where the high school students will be the instructors for those programs. You know, that gives, you know, high schools other opportunities to then go into the schools throughout the area. And we're, we're closely connected with the folks who've established those gardens throughout the, the school district. So I think there's a great opportunity for getting high school is interested in this idea and then ha, ha, having them be empowered to go out and connect with the students who work on the small, the gardens that are existent around the rest of the district. And I think that's going to be a great way to then also prime the pipeline. Students who happen to seeing that are like, great, I can't wait to get to the high school so then I can finally go and join this cohort of cool students.
Exactly. That was, that was exactly what's wrong with that. So, you know, I do, I do think it's a brilliant idea and I, and I love it. I, I share a bit of Leah's feeling that, you know, I, I wish I had known. I just feel like I have so many questions. And I wish I had heard a little bit about it before now, because I feel like it's pretty far down the line. But that doesn't mean that, you know, I don't think it's amazing. I do, and I think it can really potentially provide a, a meaningful, hands-on experience outside of the classroom for a lot of kids. So at least I hope so. I hope they're interested.
So there, there's been a lot of, it's taken a lot of time for the planning. And then, of course, the funding has been, you know, a concern before, you know, kind of moving forward, knowing that we would have the, the funding. Great news, just got word that the FEF funded, has approved and has funded the $48,000 for this program, so.
Let's celebrate.
Thank you, FEF. That's fantastic.
Congratulations, everyone.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, it does sound like a really super cool program and a way to actually be doing some hands-on learning. Having just come out of a budget committee meeting, I want to make sure, look at all sides of things. And, you know, I've had an opportunity to, you know, chaperone a, a high school group to Washington DC, where we talked about social justice and food justice issues and access to, to, to healthy foods. And it was eye-opening to see how many people don't have access to even things like fruits and vegetables in a grocery store. I guess my question is, is, is we are always trying to watch, watch our budget, but also trying to incorporate, you know, social justice programs into our curriculum, and RCEF inclusion into our curriculum. I, I, I'm wondering if some of these things couldn't be morphed into the current curriculum and social studies and science classes, health classes, without necessarily creating a, a brand-new curriculum on its own and adding an additional point four? Has, has that been discussed at all? Or was it pretty much just, this is a new program and we need to make it an addition?
Well, I hope it's both.
Absolutely. It was early on, we had lots of discussions. With that out, Sonia, if you want to add, Ben, Henry St. Julian was a part of all those early discussions about how this could, could work, but either one wants to add it on?
Yeah, I think that's where all of our time was spent in the original conversation was whether or not we could even realize the interdisciplinary program that was proposed by Ben, Andre, and Matt from the beginning. And so to break it out and have pieces of it owned in each department, I think affects the overall design of the program. And it would actually be limiting in getting students into the, the hands-on space because it'd have the, the classroom experience associated with each subject. But I think what makes this program stand out and will make it the thing that attracts our students and really helps develop their understanding is that agricultural piece that brings all of those different parts together. And we would need someone with that expertise to be able to bring us outside and, and apply the learning.
Thank you. Terry?
I was looking at the job description for the new job, and it seemed heavy on the science. So if you're talking about this social studies aspect of this, it doesn't seem to be in the job description, or did I miss something?
I think when we were looking at certification and trying to find someone who would be able to fill the point four and recognizing that so much is born of the agriculture and environmental science and maintaining the farm, that that would be the area of certification that would be preferred and that making sure that they had the ability to speak from the social justice or racial justice principles could be something through the professional development and the development of the curriculum that we could assist in, in making sure they had those skills.
Do kids that are in the CBTE, I don't know if we call it a TRAC? I mean, do, how many cour, how many CTVE courses do people who take them take in a year? One in amongst their other things, or? I'm trying to get a handle on who is going to take this course, as other people have alluded to.
So to meet the criteria for a C, a complete CBTE pathway, there needs to be at least two year-long equivalent courses and some type of applied or independent learning. So students can take four semesterized courses, two semesterized and a year-long or two-year-long. What we're looking at developing right now is a series of semesterized offerings that a student could start in the fall or the spring, depending on what other needs they have in their, in their schedule and course load.
Do we have a cap number on this for the number of students? Because of its point four, how many semester courses do we think our class period times do we need? Is it one per semester? Or is it going to be more than one, but then it would be more than a possible point four? So do we have any idea of the numbers and how we cap that? And what, what the prerequisite may be?
So in the beginning, as we've done in building just other elective opportunities or other programs at the high school, offering that foundational semester more than once, make sure that you have a full enrollment in the, in the second semester offering, because not every student will necessarily go into the next semester. Typically, a course section is capped somewhere around 26 students. Sometimes there are safety concerns in our CBTE programs that do make the maximum enrollment slightly under. But we would want to look for a fully subscribed section and then be able to, in some cases, we could rotate like a three- or four-level course. And technically, the, the fourth level course would be the independent study for students.
So as this progresses, and we look then a second, third year as a full-year course, then obviously the administration of that part-time would probably go to a full-time position. Is that possible? Is that correct?
It could be possible if there's a high enough demand to look to increase the FTE, but students who are doing the independent work could be in the hoop house at the same time that students are taking 101 and they're just independently, you know, collecting data or caring for plants or tending to soil. Or they could be like some of our Falmouth High School preschool students now, they could be sent to one of our elementary sites where they're helping with an elementary garden and that becomes their internship. So there could be opportunities both at Falmouth High School and then at other locations.
Yeah. So I think I expressed my frustration with the process here. But I, I, you know, as I said, I think this is, this is a really great idea. I think fiscally, to be fiscally sound on this, it, this seems like, you know, it really is a pilot program of trying to establish, and it seems like a really great opportunity to get a grant to fund this position. Have you explored opportunities for grants with this? This is right up so many different grants that I've looked at, opportunities. That personally would feel a lot more fiscally sound for me in looking at a point four position for this. Has that been explored?
And, and again, Ben, Andre, Matt, and Jamie, I think the initial plan for seeking out grant support was to set up the infrastructure to be able to create the out. was to set up the infrastructure to be able to create the outdoor learning space uh, for the, the small-scale farm and setting up, um, any of the plantings that we needed. Um, that's not to say that we can't take the next step and look at other grant opportunities. Um, but that was our, our first priority in looking at available funding.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. That was, that was, that's the way that, you know, we've been working is, you know, we know that there's a lot of infrastructure costs in getting this set up. So, yes, we, we will continue to work towards whatever we need to work towards to make sure that we have the money to support this program.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, this has been really informative. There's a lot to process and, oh, uh, Terry, did you have one more? No, I was good. Thank you. Okay. Sorry, that's a lot to take in, but we appreciate your joining us this evening and sharing this program with us. So thank you all.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, and so we're going to segue into the first read of the food justice job description. It is included in your packet. Again, this is just a first read. I will take this up again in January, but Lori, if you wanted to add anything to this.
Yes, just any questions that you may have. I think we've actually talked about the, the position enough at this point unless you have questions about that.
Yes, I just have one more quick question. When, when did this, um, process start? When did the discussions about this start?
Ben, do, do you know? Because I know that I was brought in after some of the, the initial discussions.
Uh, in terms of like the, the, the whole project idea was floated or the, the specifically the position?
What was it?
That was the idea.
Hits to the district.
Yeah, the idea.
Oh, the idea was, uh, you know, it was late summer last year. We started having casual conversations with Henry Saint Julian about it. You know, it was, you know, we were having some, you know, relatively informal conversations with him to kind of, uh, talk about the idea in general. And then it kind of came up towards kind of, uh, district management, kind of more nearer the spring this year. That's right. Something like that, Sonia. Late spring, maybe July. I can't remember.
Yes. I think it was just before school let out last year.
Okay. Um, any other questions or comments specific to the job description? And again, this is our first, we will revisit this in January, but any initial questions?
Uh, the first read, we come back in January.
Yep.
And then there's a vote.
Yes, at that point we'll act on the position. Yes. I do have a question about the position because the forty-eight thousand, from what I understood, that was also to develop curriculum. But I see that the curriculum's in this position. It says, develop and implement curriculum objectives. So I'm just to guess understand a little bit more about.
Sure. I can answer that if that's helpful. Um, so in the initial grant to Falmouth Education Foundation, that's to begin building the courses, but continuing to keep our curriculum relevant and viable, I think is included in most of our job descriptions. And that's something, um, that all of our teachers continue to, uh, contribute to, um, in shape each year. Um, so that's why it's included in the job description. That's not to take away from the initial creation, but it's to keep it relevant as we continue to learn.
And Sonia, just to clarify, the forty-eight thousand that would go toward curriculum development, that is to cover time, right? Someone's time?
Yes, and it's only a small portion within, um, that allocation that would be devoted to that person's time.
I think, um, for me, it'd be helpful if we could maybe see a preliminary budget of this program. Exactly. Yeah. Yep. Just to sort of see where, where the money is being allocated. I think that'd be really helpful for me. I'm sure it sounds like for everyone else as well. Um, Andrea?
And speaking of budget, I was wondering, um, if the budget subcommittee, like, how does this fit in? Does that, has it been discussed? We we only met twice so far this year because the process is just getting going. Um, but we didn't, we talked about the fact that this existed, but we, we haven't talked about it. Um, can I add to your budget request? So I'm also curious because it is sort of the, the, it's not just the initial, um, cost of getting the hoop house and the curriculum. And it's not just the salary, but I imagine, you know, it, I mean, it's sort of a farm. So there's probably like longer-term things that, okay, well, in two years we're going to need this and then in the next year we're going to need that. And so I'd love to see also if there's any thoughts, even if it's just preliminary, like, okay, well, probably in three years we're going to need that. That would be really helpful because what we don't want is to, you know, go all in on some of the pieces without planning for those longer-range items. There might not be any, but I just want to make sure that we're thoughtful about it.
Having that conversation.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. So, uh, thank you. Oh, sorry, Terry.
Um, the student part too. I, I don't know if we can do a preliminary, um, when you, you know, when you send out, are you interested? What's that?
Survey.
Yeah, just a little survey.
A survey, yeah. If we can just, some kind of survey because, I mean, can we fill, uh, do we, can we fill another C B T E course? And keep it going. Anyway. I don't know who would do that.
Anything? Okay. Thank you. Again, thank you for all of this. And we will again revisit the job description in January.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is, uh, the presentation from D E I officer. If we can promote Jackie. That comes up. I don't see your face. Hi Jackie, thank you for your patience. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to be invited in tonight. Um, so I've been currently working on many, uh, meeting many different people throughout the community and building trust with people under that D E I umbrella. I'm working with a few different building leaders to help with that mindset shift that we're going to need to implement the restorative justice practices in our district successfully. And so a lot of that is just changing our perspective around our current norms and traditions to imagining that ideal world where every student feels like they belong and they're supported with the tools and the skills and the support that they would need to thrive in the world. Uh, I'm also working on definitions with regards to the D E I words, uh, and phrases. So we can be unified with a standardized language. So everyone is able to discuss diversity, equity and inclusion. And I'm collaborating with others in the community on the specific language to use that works in Falmouth. Uh, I think that if we have a standardized language, that can really help our district feel the support that's necessary to engage in these difficult conversations. A lot of this work is unfamiliar and often uncomfortable. And so if we can stay unified in the work that we're doing and have an understanding that equity and inclusion for all are the district goals top-down, then we can have that trust with families that their students are being taken care of in our district. Uh, I believe that our students and staff are an integral part to the work that we are doing in our school. If they're satisfied and feel supported and trust the school's vision, they can be their best selves in the classroom and when working with the students. This is important for retaining the talent that we have in our school district and supporting newer teachers and teachers who want to be successful and fulfilled in their job. I know that the national data on those who enter education, especially after COVID, shows that it's a field with a lot of burnout and turnover. So I want to be cognizant of all the ways that we need to be supportive in the work that they're doing. I want to look at this data too, as it will help us attract and hire and, uh, retain a more diverse workforce for the district. So it can match our current student demographics. Uh, great teachers create that great environment. And I'm speaking with many different families, teachers and students about their perspective on D E I issues or what Falmouth could do to improve their experience. I'm in the process of getting access to the new desk information, which will inform the decisions we make for the students' emotional and mental well-being in the, uh, from the lines of equity and inclusion. I've also been starting exit interviews for those who have left our district, both parents and students and employees, a picture of their experiences. Um, I'm attending meetings and training throughout the school and the district focus on restorative justice, cultural proficiency, leadership, training for equity, racial justice, on the Gay Street Alliance, a lot of D E I university councils, the VIPS program and other programs. In addition, I'm also working closely with many different staff and community members, um, like those in Hui and in the science community, the tribe and double A C P and, um, Kate Verdi and, and others who are engaged in D E I work across Falmouth and Cape Cod. This will help us build collaborative communities of stakeholders to engage different perspectives to inform the work that we're doing. Uh, I know that we have such a supportive and active community here in Falmouth. And I know that they are rooting on the Clippers and that there's so many people with different kinds of expertise that we can learn from. Um, I'm also working with an international leader named Dr. Tom Kavanaugh on restorative justice practices. And he's doing the training on how to be a restorative justice facilitator and how to successfully implement those practices and mindsets into our school system. This is a massive initiative and an ongoing effort from the district. And I'm looking forward to seeing it successfully implemented as it has been in other districts. And it's really made a positive difference for students. I know we have so many future leaders here and so I'm so excited for the things that they're going to do. I can see a lot of the pathways for D E I to be accomplished in the future. And I'm really excited to be serving the district on these initiatives.
Okay. Um, questions for Jackie? Leah? Um, hi Jackie. Uh, it, it was so great to hear about the exit interviews. I know we've been talking a lot about that over the years. Um, so in your presentation that you just said that you had started doing this, can you just tell us a little bit about, um, what those questions are or what the process is that you're developing?
Yeah. Well, right now it's been people reaching out to me. So I am, um, currently going through and reviewing the data. Um, Jawani has sent me, um, uh, a lot of different demographic data such as salary, job title, position, um, years that they were with the district. And so these are things that I'm reviewing both at town and the school to see, um, you know, just get a general, um, feel of what the experience was and where maybe there were gaps. Um, and this is really similar to, um, I'm following like Hui's model on their Livingston report and, um, other equity audit models.
And Jackie, is, does this include also reaching out to families who have decided to leave Falmouth Public Schools?
Yes, I do have, um, some families reaching out to me and then, um, I plan on starting to reach out to, uh, other families as I'm learning more information. So I'm just, yeah, in the process of gathering a lot of that information.
Great. Yeah, that's great. Yeah, I've been curious about that. Um, any other questions?
Kelly? I, I always try to go, you know, I always want to go after you. I know. I always have so much to say. So I try to, no. Um, so it sounds amazing. A lot of things that you mentioned, I mean, it was like the perfect setup for our goal to, um, update in a little bit. A lot of the things sound so well-aligned with the work that, you know, we know the district is already undertaking. So since we're on the subject of budget, I mean, do you, I, I totally appreciate that you are definitely in like this data collection, um, getting to know the district, letting people get to know you. Like, it's so important. And I'm really grateful that um, that's been sort of your introductions, like the listen and, listening and learning tour kind of model, which we know is really important. Um, but do you anticipate there being like, uh, fiscal needs moving forward, once you've figured out all of the moving pieces? Because it's a new position. And, um, we don't have, I, I'm assuming, I've never noticed that there's funding in the budget for this type of stuff, but it sounds like there's already so much going on. Just wondering what the plan is for being able to do the work that you already mentioned.
Um, when I came in, I developed, um, the D E I initiatives based off of what U C Davis was doing for their college students, um, and their campus. And so, um, it's, um, so I have a lot of those goals outlined and those are, um, you know, very long-term goals for the district. And, um, so those include like having liaisons and interpreters and translators, um, that would work with the families to help, uh, incorporate families into the community. That, you know, more restorative justice trainings, expanding on a D E I team, um, those types of things. I do have a lot of ideas for the future.
That's great. I just imagine that there would be more to come. So, um, I just want to put it out there that, you know, I think we're fiscally aware committee. So we want, we want to know what those are so that we can plan for that.
Exactly. And sort of piggybacking on Kelly's, uh, question, which was one of my questions. So thank you for asking it. Exactly. Um, so sort of beyond the budget aspect, what, what things do you feel that, I know you've only been here for two months, so this is a big question right now, but what things could we do support, to support you, to make you successful as you, you know, proceed down this path?
Um, a lot of you have been really helpful in, um, helping connect me to the community. And so, um, I can hear the stories. Um, I think the budget is going to be something that we're going to have to talk about in the future. What, um, you know, what programs we can start in the beginning um, and, you know, prioritizing those together. Um, and some of it involves, um, you, you know, our goal is for the restorative justice. And so that would also be, um, something I'd really like, uh, more training on for the school committee, um, for a lot of the staff. So, um, because right now I'm, um, I'm still envisioning this world that where we focus on true justice. And so I really want to have people to talk about it with and, um, really see how we can implement this and see what, um, what, you know, barriers they might see, you know, knowing the community better, principals knowing their schools better. And really having a collaborative approach on how we can do this to have long-term success and be, and be a leader for this.
Thank you. And I, I appreciate your offering, um, some training to the school committee because that's something I think that we've talked about. And and maybe this winter we can look at having an executive session or a session together to, with Jackie, uh, so that you do the preliminary training for us. That'd be wonderful. Yes, certainly. Yeah. Um, Jackie, I, I know it's, again, it's only been two months, but, um, just, you know, obviously some things that you mentioned, um, ring very dear to my heart. So thinking about, um, parent liaisons, interpreters and translators, maybe that coming hand-in-hand, maybe those being the same person. Are you feeling that you have the ability to really give language access to families within the community right now? Or is that a barrier for you right now?
Um, I'm learning about a lot of the protocols and, um, I know that there are a lot of, uh, different protocols in, um, access plans being, that are being worked on right now. So I'd love to, um, work on those too, because that's my background and that's something that, you know, I'm more comfortable with. Um, and I've been a liaison before for, um, a public school. And so, um, and that, you know, job, I was working with families from like seventy different countries. So that job was, um, um, you know, required a lot of quick thinking and a lot of, um, flexibility. And so I know that, um, here I would, I think the, one of the biggest assets is that if we had someone who was bilingual, um, there's a, a large Portuguese population. Um, and, you know, and there are other speakers like Spanish speakers that, um, I want to look more into kind of some of the, the data surrounding, um, their participation. Um, and then, you know, just wondering, um, what we can do to ensure that we're able to reach all of the communities that go to our school.
Kelly, what's a liaison? I mean, I know what a liaison is.
Um, this position was called like a school, school home liaison. And so, um, we would do anything that the families or children needed to be successful in the school. So one of the schools had, um, lots of different clothing and home goods. Um, and that was kind of like a little store that we could go to, um, winter coats, those types of things. Um, we had, uh, on-call interpreters and translators to help us with forms. And then we would, um, sit and explain everything to the families because there's a lot of, um, jargon that's always specific to, um, the school system. So like, for example, here you have Clipper Time. And unless someone's explicitly explaining what Clipper Time is, um, a family who is unfamiliar with Falmouth and then also doesn't speak English is going to have And then also doesn't speak English is going to have a difficult time understanding unless someone is, you know, sitting there with them. So.
So like someone who helps a family navigate like the whole. Okay.
And, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Jackie? Oh, that's it. Thank you for joining us tonight. I know we will see you again soon. Have a great evening, Jackie. Thank you. Okay, we've sort of already had some budget conversations, but next up is the preliminary budget discussion.
Hi, thank you. So I, it's December, we kind of do a high-level. Update of where we are with the budget development process. So there's kind of three topics that I wanna focus on the process and where we are in that process. What kind of assumptions we're making for the budget this year and what the unknowns are. Process, we're well within the process. We have asked principals to develop their supplies and materials budget. And there's discussions ongoing about their staff needs. And, and once the budget subcommittee has met a couple of times. And, and two members of the school committee who have been focusing on. Oversight of the Esser dollars, we've met a couple of times. So there's been a good number of meetings that have been happening since over the last two months. The assumptions that we're working with going into this budget season are, are a couple. One, that our student enrollment trends will continue in a, in a generally positive direction. Nothing, nothing dramatic, but it's not, the trends aren't, are either gonna be stay flat or, or go up a little bit. That we will continue to use and spend down Esser dollars into next year. At not at the same rate that we're use, using them this year. But that we will have those to, to continue to supplement our budget and provide temporary support. And thirdly, that there are some, I'm gonna refer to them as new normal operating costs. And those would be in two categories. And we've begun to talk to the town about those. Those kind of new normal operating costs is that, that the need to budget for additional. I, I would call them maintenance or nursing supplies related to P P E purchases. Merv thirteen filters, disinfectant, sanitizing equipment. Nursing supplies across the, all of our bu, our, our school buildings. Will, will need to be maintained and be part of their budget for the foreseeable future. We know it's not going away quickly and in two years from now, three years from now, probably, we most likely will need to continue to budget for that. The other operating cost that has gone up over the past year or so is that our payroll system. Has changed over and this was done in conjunction with the town, the town led this process. And there's a cost that for this service that the school, school department needs to participate in. And then we've also had to. Add an additional payroll person, a second payroll person. So those two operating costs have, have gone up. And we're talking with the town about, about helping to support those two operating costs. So in addition to the two point three percent increase that the select board has, has voted. You know, as a policy across all departments, we're looking to get sort of those two buckets of operating costs. That, that are sort of part of the new normal funded too. And we're talking with the town about, about that. Then the third topic that we bring up at this time of year is what are the unknowns? Unknowns can be, what is the pandemic gonna look like? And the staffing, the temporary staffing for the pandemic gonna look like next year, that's an unknown. But the real unknown for us is that we're just entering collective bargaining. So, and that's fine, we've done this many, many times. But that is an unknown going into the next fiscal year and the next couple of fiscal years. So we have to make some, some estimates and assumptions going into that. So relative to where we were last year, we're in a much, much better place. In, in a lot of ways, but especially financially and what we understand about our financial situation going forward. So I, I wouldn't worry, there shouldn't be any drama. This, this fiscal year going into budget season. And the, the, we have the same timeframe as we laid out in September and you all adopted in September. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them or you can always, you know how to find me.
Yes, we do. Uh, thank you, Patrick. Leah has a question.
So Patrick, you had mentioned the second payroll person. And I have two questions about that. Is that person already in place this year? And my second question is. Is that, was that needed because the system is more complicated? Or what was the cause of needing an additional payroll person?
A couple of things. One, we thought for, for the last few years, we, we've been hoping and thinking that. A better software would, would, would sort of alleviate the burden on our single payroll person. That's one. Two, we've had enormous turnover in our payroll. Uh, staff member over the past. Six, seven years, and we need, we needed to solve that. And then the third thing is, is that COVID and the number of people that we've had to hire. And the enormous tracking of, of the. Accruals, meaning the sick days, is, has been significant. So there's a number of things that have been significant in, in that we've had to. Address to support payroll and obviously. If you lose a payroll person at the wrong time. That is, that is a loss that everybody will feel rapidly. So this is a little backstopping too.
Follow-up to that then, for the payroll, for the additional payroll position, was that? In our budget, that, was that included in this year's budget, that position? Or is this, was this Esser funded or?
We, we Esser funded it this year.
Okay, so this is something that we wanna build into the budget because that we need to sustain.
Correct, correct, correct.
So that would be an additional cost for us.
Yeah, and that's why we're asking for the town to, to pitch in to support this above and beyond the two point three percent.
Thank you.
I didn't think of it, when, when we have budget some this afternoon. But when, I'm just wondering if there's actually gonna be, well, I guess this is a question for much, much later. I'm gonna hold.
My interest has been piqued, but I respect your desire to hold the question. Um, any other questions for Patrick at this point? Okay, thank you. Appreciate the overview, Patrick. Thank you. Okay, excuse me, next on our agenda is an update of goals by school committee members. And I will lead this off related to goal number one. As Terry mentioned at our last meeting, Terry, Melissa and I met to sort of begin the process. Of addressing some of the key actions that we identified in our goal one. Which related to the development and implementation of a multi-year communication strategy. There are three key things that we identified in that meeting. First was that we wanted to send out a very broad survey to our stakeholders. And that included families, students and teachers in the district. I wanna reiterate that this is, this is an anonymous survey, so I can see the responses. I cannot see any of the email addresses or names. I think that's really important to highlight, it's anonymous. As of this morning, we have received two hundred and thirty-five responses. Uh, the survey will be live through December. If for some reason you lost track of the link of the survey, if you just email the school committee, I can send you a link to the survey. Cause we definitely wanna hear from as many people as possible. Again, it's anonymous, but based on the responses, I can see that we're, we're hearing from staff members and families and students. So that's really helpful and, and themes are already starting to be pulled out of those responses. So the survey will be open through December and will probably take January and. The first week or so of February to really analyze that data, along with the grad student who's gonna help us. And then we will present the findings of that survey in February. And then take it from there and help to build some of our goals of the school committee as well from there. And Terry, I'll let you update on your piece of the communication.
Okay, so it's gonna tie into what we heard about a liaison person that we just heard. In talking with the, or in communicating with the head of the E L D department, his name is Christine Nicholson. It seems that the written stuff that goes home to families is handled. Because the principals have their newsletters in, you know, translated. And um, there's a talking point program, maybe Leah knows about that. I don't really know what that is. But it, it helps, it translates things to the rip. But what confuses families, and it's good that we have this committee, because we learned where our communications break down. What, what confuses multilingual families, it seems, are those notices that go on. You know, those all, all call notices that go out, that, that families are sometimes confused by those. So that's one thing we can think about fixing. So just the oral thing.
Um, and another piece of the communication puzzle, Melissa unfortunately isn't feeling well, she's in here tonight. We spoke about ways to quickly summarize our school committee meetings. Uh, just to take the agenda and just to sort of give really, you know, rough summaries of what occurred. Um, so that's something she's gonna work on and then use social media to, to get that out there. That was actually something that was expressed also in the survey results of wishing that there was a way to find out the summary of the school committee meetings. Without having to go on YouTube and, and sit and watch the, the video for an hour or two. Um, so that was really helpful feedback. And that is something that we're gonna work on, because it is important. Um, and then finally, another snippet of the communication is, you know, we talked about, we always wanna hear from our students. Um, and so starting in January, as previously mentioned, we will bring back, you know, we refer to it as the fishbowl. We can maybe think of a new name for it, but a way for students to communicate with us. And it, and again, I think it's so important to all of us to have really authentic communication. So it's going to ask, you know, what's working well, what would they wanna fix and any sort of feedback, rather than just, you know, everything is wonderful. Cause we want, we, we know it's a wonderful community, but we also need to identify some of the things that we need to work on as well. So that's just a really quick overview of our communication goal update. Give any questions before we go to number two.
Um, so in regards to the survey, um, will that be resent? Cause I know it's like announced right here. Is there another way to get that out, but it's still open? And, and that it's still the same survey, so people who already answered it, you know, just get a reminder.
Yeah, that's great. I have to work with Sharon on that to have a reset.
And, and I know that it's, it's anonymous, which is great and it's very important. And that you do feel like you're getting a general sense of that we're having, you know, families, staff and students.
Yes.
Do we have any sense, is there any kind of identifiers that we're getting a broad cross-section of all of our schools?
So, um, yes, in the, in the, some of the feedback from students, it's something like, um, you know, I wish the bathrooms in high school were unlocked. Down to, you know, the pizza at my elementary school isn't good. So to your point, while I don't know exactly who is responding, I can definitely say we're getting different age groups there. I like to ask my question when I go into goals, so I'm gonna have to give more time. But I'm, I'm just thinking about the, the fishbowl or the, you know, having the, the comments from. It would be great if we could align that to kind of what our goals are as a school committee. So we're getting feedback directly that can impact how we move forward in our goals. Um, so just aligning to communication, aligning to equity and access and. Esther funds, I don't know that they're gonna have.
Oh, yeah, well, but maybe like, maybe about funding, about, you know, if they're noticing that there's things that they would like to see more funding for. It could be better pizza.
But I like their total ingenuity of their comments without any direction.
Yeah.
That's what I love. So.
It's just nice to have a question, like something that can. Sometimes it's hard to just write, you know, instead of not having that, something that.
Yeah, and, and I hope that this is just the beginning, right, of our surveying our community. So that could be another one where we just target that one question. So I think it should be an ongoing exercise. Okay, you're ready? I'll go into goal two. So I mean, Jackie really kind of summarized what, what we've really been working on. And, and that is a, a list of terminology to define for everyone to have common language. And what our action step is right now is that we have started with Jackie's help. We've started a list of terms. And because this is all of our charge together, where Kelly's gonna send out the list by the end of the week to the whole committee. For you to see what terms are on there right now and add any terms that, that you feel would be really helpful to have clarity around. Um, and then our next step will be to get someone to, or to find someone who would facilitate. Really the, the conversations around developing these definitions for the terms. And I think what Jackie was definitely alluding to is that we want this language to be common throughout our town. So it would be, you know, with the select board, with the school committee, with our local committees. That everyone is having some professional development around these terms and the true definitions around it. So when we're having conversations, hard ones, we're, we're knowing when we talk about these, when we talk, when we use this language, this is what it means. So I don't, did I, did I do that okay? Okay. Great, thank you.
Here we are. So I'll send an email out, I'll send it tomorrow and I hope that we can turn it around within a week. So that it doesn't get lost before.
That is, the deadline is December thirty-first. By the end of the month. I've heard to say that. Um, goal three, I lost track of numbers, would be budget and Esser, Bill Ryder or Bill Dorfner?
As much as I. Have complained over several years in reference to grants. In reference to federal support, which basically year to year in a budget. Is very limited, almost nothing. However, with COVID. The federal government stepped up. And started with the CARES Act, which is Corona Virus Aid Relief Economic Security. And that probably came into play before Esser dollars, but it was a start. Followed by the Esser dollars, which was elementary and secondary school emergency relief. Again, in response to COVID and supporting kids, supporting education. And to me, that's what Esser and the dollars have been all about. There were three Esser, there's Esser one, Esser two, Esser three. Esser one is gone. Esser two and three will be gone. The great thing about what Falmouth District did is we use the Esser dollars. For total temporary staff support. That support, temporary staff was for our kids. What better way to use educational dollars? I just felt the way the district set it up. And just looked at how we can support teachers with substitutes, how we can support these nursing assistants. How we can look at everything in our district. in our district and pay these people out of Esser dollars to get, create support for our kids. The one thing about Esser dollars and the one thing about grants is they go away. So as Patrick Murphy said, next year, we're in great shape. But again, through administrative management, we're going to have to look to possibly pare down over time and look to save dollars over time because the grant money from Esser will be gone in another year or so. The other thing about Esser dollars is when you get them, you have to spend them. And obviously, we have done that and we have done that in a supportive way. I I'll let you go from there. I don't know if I covered it all or what.
I think that was that was an excellent description. I would I would just add, you know, I think the most important thing in everything we do is to make sure our kids are getting a quality education and being in school. And there are a lot of districts who took Esser funds for capital projects, you know, those kinds of things. Our district used it to do whatever we needed to do to get the kids into school. And 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 I thought that was a a great takeaway from our meeting yesterday. And, you know, it's it's definitely been a huge help from the federal government. And, you know, do we still have Esser funds? Yes. Have they already been allocated? Yes. So it it has been part of the plan. So I I kind of look at it as when you find out if you're going to get a tax return and you're already thinking about different things that you're going to spend it on, and maybe I'll get that new lawnmower and do the car repairs to pay off the bill. If 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 we're thinking about adding a vacation in there somewhere, it's it's already been allocated to the lawnmower, the car repairs and bill. So that that's kind of the best real life way I can put it to to say that the funds are there, but they are already allocated based on our our current plan. We need to change that. Then we need to pare back from what our plan is like.
Thank you very, very much for the update. And I would like us to do another update next quarter as well. I think it's good to keep the momentum going and make sure we stay on task with our goals. So thank you all for all of your hard work above and beyond. Okay, next, we already did this friendship. The first read of policy JB, equal educational opportunities, Lori.
Yeah, so based on the request that Mr. Dorfner had about looking at policy and equitable class assignments, the policy subcommittee looked at several things and ended up deciding to look at the equal educational opportunities policy JB. And if you see the policy, the subcommittee has added class assignments to the third paragraph. So it reads this, this will mean that every student will be given equal opportunity in school admission, admissions of courses, class assignments, course content, guidance, and extracurricular and athletic activities. So that was the addition.
Those decided.
Terry. And I just wanted to emphasize the phrase that we added was class assignments. Because that's what was the initial impetus for this change request. So that had not been in there in the past, the phrase class assignments.
Thank you, Annie, oh, yeah.
I was very prepared today, I guess. So I just, I homeless homelessness is brought up in here as a status and I I'm just in looking at this. Just it's no child shall be excluded from or discriminated against in admission to a public school of any town. And then equal, this means that every student will be given equal opportunities in school admission, admissions to courses. I I just, I have a little bit of an issue with this idea of equal. Because if someone is homeless, according to McKinney Mento, they don't go through the same process as everybody else. They get admitted right away into school. They do not have to have all of their paperwork. So I just, that was just a question I had for for policy around just that aspect, that it is, it's not an equal. Not everyone has the same process there. If you're homeless, you don't have the same process. You're getting right away into a system. According to McKinney Mento law. So that's one thing I had. And then the other thing was, I know that this is not across the board. But you guys know what my my passion is and my advocacy around immigrant rights. And I do believe that immigration status should be included in the anti discrimination pieces. And I would like to see that across the board. I don't believe that that falls so much with the national origin because I do think that immigration status becomes another thing that people can be discriminated against. And we have strict laws in our schools to not ask status and that we cannot discriminate against that. So those are my two.
Those are great too. So thank you. Any other comments for?
I just wanted to ask Leah actually to to clarify. Because it it is when you're going through this, right, you pull out one piece, you make one change and it relates to other things. So when you were talking about homeless status, that I understand what you were saying, that the process is different. But where we say equal here, it's related to opportunity. So does that still, because I would be concerned if we're stating something that is not meeting the law there. But does opportunity change that versus? If I mean, process, right, what you were saying.
Potentially could, except for when I, just because I deal with school admissions all the time, enrollment. What happens is, you know, there are, there are things that people have to have, you know, proof of residency, immunizations, you know, things that have to be in place for for students to be admitted into schools. I don't know what i- if that falls into opportunity or not, but according to McKinney Mento, you can bypass all of those requirements. If you're homeless.
I'm pretty sure we have a separate policy that handles the process for homeless students at preschool.
Yeah, so I don't, I was actually thinking that could just be listed here. That's, I think that just having something that just says that, you know, an asterisk or something that explains that homeless, you know, go to McKinney Mento.
Or I guess where you could put a qualifying phrase at the end, you know, except as exempt by, you know, any other law. We put those in all the time.
That's what I was thinking.
Right, so we'll take that back.
We have that policy meeting tomorrow, so.
Yes, we can discuss that Thursday. Yeah, so I just want to reiterate that, you know.
Down, I think that's in there too.
So we.
Yeah, no, I was just saying that, you know, of course, federal law is always going to trump even school committee policy. But so it's not that we wouldn't follow that here. The other thing is I'm I'm not sure, and I'd have to go back and look, if this was one of the mask model policies. Something tells me it was. And so maybe getting a little bit better understanding of how this was written and why it might be helpful, which I will attempt to do before Thursday when we need.
But I appreciate policy subcommittee taking that idea. Those are important. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda update by superintendent.
Thank you. So just a few things. I just wanted to add you have in your policy or in your packet, sorry, just talk about policy. In your packet, of course, November was Native American Heritage Month. And we said that there would be some activities that would be happening, following up from Indigenous Peoples' Day and the storytelling and dance and performances that all of our schools took place. We just have one little art project from Mon Hall and a list of books that they read throughout. So that was in your packet. At North Elementary, Mr. Charles, the music teacher, explored musical explorers in Carnegie Hall. Featured Native American musician Martha Redbone. And so that was explored in the classes in art. Kindergarten and second grade students learned how to do blanket weaving with paper. And in grade three, which is true across all the schools, is studying the Montana and Pilgrims as part of the Massachusetts Unit. And that took place in November. And at T Ticket, we also had Kitty Hendricks that joined grade three classrooms and just spoke on the topic and what came before Thanksgiving and then also about the, learned about the drumming circle. The students, they actually got to participate under the tent. And then grade two was a red story about the Native American hero. So there were things, that's not exhaustive, but just wanted to give a few things that were happening across all of our schools for Native American Heritage Month. I always like to say that this is something that's ongoing. It's always nice to be recognized in a month of the year, but this is something that, you know, gets integrated part of our units and ongoing discussions throughout the year. Also included in your packet is the list of senior award recipients. It was a very nice ceremony. It was, it's always so great to be able to be in person for for all of these awards and performances and and kind of getting back to normal with that. So you can see all of our seniors that were recognized. And then you received another school counseling connection. It gives a little bit about what's from the the counseling department. I did want to point out on page six about the college fair, one more thing that we were able to bring bring back this year, and it's just so valuable for the students to be able to have all these opportunities to be able to talk with with people and and just know what their options are and, you know, just starting to ask questions. So it was very nice. It was well attended. We had lots of people come in colleges and and military and just being able to speak to to some of things. So it was really nice to have something back in in person. So that, we had our fall partnership forum. We had to pause during COVID. We did meet with our liaisons that were identified from each institution by Zoom over the last year and a half. But to be able to get back to a in-person fall partnership forum was very excited or exciting. And so got together to talk. We had another pitch around after school activities for our elementary students. So it's a cultural experience. The Wolf's of Tribe will be doing dance and history. Our Cape Verdean community will be doing a couple of weeks around music and dance and their culture. And then the interpretive dance Turning Point Dance Studio will talk about how they learn about doing interpretive dance and bring that together along with another artist. So kind of tying in lots of our other partnerships. It's exciting to hear that. So we're we're getting back to things and that's really key. Music performance, we had the Lawrence performance on Monday night. Once again, so exciting to see kids back on stage and live. They were, the the music was just beautiful. They did a great job. And Thursday night will be the, of course, presentation performance at the high school. So we're excited about that. And today I had a another coffee hour with parents. Bill Ryder joined us. That was great. But the topics range from the Texas State Program in the schools to a social emotional health for adults and students. Many ideas were shared and it was, it was just a great discussion around that. And if you wanted to add anything on that one.
Very good discussion, very broad based, which was nice. Parents very well.
Yes, that's very good. I I really do enjoy those. Brian, if you could promote Mr. Bushy, please, and while you're doing that. So I have a very exciting announcement to make. The U S News and World Report does a high school ranking. And if you remember from April, we announced that Falmouth High School was ranked 85th within Massachusetts. In a national ranking, they were 2,070 out of 17,857. And I should have said in Massachusetts, they ranked 85 and out of 348 schools, which was very exciting. And I mentioned that again because for the first time, U S News and World Report is now announcing middle schools. And so is Mr. Bushy with us? Okay. I'd like them to be here when we announce.
I can try to let him talk at least.
All right. So, Mr. Bushy. All right. I'd like to say congratulations to you and your entire staff. Lawrence was named number 61 out of 491 middle schools in the state of Massachusetts. Lawrence. Oh.
Hey, everyone. Past your bedtime, but.
This is exciting, Peyton, so hang in there. So our students at Lawrence scored 65% or 65% of the students scored at or above the proficient level for math. 66% scored at or above the level in reading. For the state, those scores were at the state, it was 53% of the students tested at or above the proficient level in reading and 49% tested at or above the the level in math. So we were well above the the state. The, we tied for in the reading proficiency rank at 103 and the math proficiency rank at 96 across the state. Something else that piece of data that I wanted to share is the percentage of teachers with three or more experience, years of experience at Lawrence is 96.1%. So for all these reasons, Lawrence was selected and 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 more, these reasons and more, it's well deserved. And I just, thank you, Mr. Bushy. I didn't know if you wanted to say anything.
Yeah, if you don't mind, thank you. This, it's been a been a fun meeting. Really enjoyed learning about the programming at the high school and meeting Jackie again. But I just wanted to say thanks to everyone on the school committee and members of the Ministry of Council that are here on the Zoom for letting me just say a couple of words. First, I have to admit, I was not aware of the award and I learned about this today from Dr. Dorsa. Thanks for bringing me in. I looked at the criteria this afternoon though, and I was not surprised that we were recognized, of course, but I do believe that we'd be even higher on the list if the metrics were around relationship building and ways that we connect with kids. Because those are some of our greatest strengths as a school. So on behalf of the school, I just would like to recognize the hard work that's done at the younger grades with our our Ospreys in elementary school, sending the kids to seventh grade, ready to learn. And I want to recognize the work of our team leaders, department heads. My administrative team and office staff are all so incredible. And we work so closely and effectively together. Our counselors, support staff, teaching assistants and teachers, particularly the teachers, they go out of their way every day to engage the students and create the respective respectful learning community communities in their classrooms. And also our custodians, cafeteria staff and bus drivers, they all play such a critical role in the kids' daily experiences at the school. The families in the community. Uh, the families in the community play a role, of course. Ultimately, our biggest thank you goes out to the students in the district. They make our school such a great place to learn and grow. Um, and, uh, thank you to the people here on the Zoom. Uh, and, uh, I just, uh, I'm, I'm very, I'm very, uh, blessed and, uh, honored to be part of this, uh, this district. And, uh, I, I thank everyone here. And, um, as a parent, employee and alum, I say, go Bulldogs and go Clippers. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. This is a wonderful honor. Congratulations to everyone at Lawrence. And people are clapping. You're doing lots of air claps. Great. That was your update?
That was a.
That's a great way to end your update. Um, any questions for Dr. Dorfner? No. Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to routine business, approve minutes of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Andrea makes the motions. There are seconds and Bill Dorfner seconds. Um, it's a roll called vote. So Lisa, I'll start with you.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Bill Ryder.
Ryder, yes.
Carrie Videris, yes.
Well, yes.
Andrew Vard, yes.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill Dorfner, yes.
And now we can all put as a yes. So that's unanimous. We approve those minutes. Uh, committee member reports. We talked about our goal. Are there any other reports that you'd like to share with the group? I'll just say, obviously, we already talked about budget because Patrick did that awesome update. So budget met today. And negotiations is ongoing, um, which is scheduled to be this week. Yes, thank you. Any other updates? Okay, request for information. Request for information. Um, I have a question for you guys. Are COVID, um, the dashboard information, if you could highlight again where any concerned families could go to see the latest, um, stats on COVID and test and stay and any of that information. If you could highlight that again, that'd be really helpful.
So, um, if you go on the Falmouth, um, public schools website, uh, and you scroll down, there's a, there's, um, different icons. It's a little, um, I don't know if it's a suitcase or a thing, but it's a little, if you click on that, it'll take you, uh, directly to um, the, uh, COVID page. And then off to the right, there are, um, a few different graphs that you can. It is a suitcase. I was like, I'm not sure. And then there are different graphs. Um, we, um, did actually make a, um, update. So we have the, uh, we set, we did have this positive, uh, staff and students together and they were only the in-school. When I say in-school positive cases, meaning that, um, they were, we had to do contact tracing. So, um, we did have just those. We have separated since then, we have separated, um, the staff and students into two different uh, graphs. And now if you can see the comparison of how many positive cases have been reported us and then the difference between, um, the total number of positive cases and those that were in school that required, uh, contact tracing. Uh, we've had, um, all along, we've had the number of students that, um, have chosen to quarantine rather than be in the test and stay program. And then we have, uh, the vaccination. Uh, that's the fourth graph. And this will be changing as of this Friday. Uh, this will be the first time that we, we are reporting on this. That our five to eleven-year-olds are fully vaccinated. So you will, we will, uh, be adding the other schools, um, to, to show where we are on vaccination rates, um, as well. So.
Are these, sorry, are these updated weekly or?
So the first three, the positive, uh, cases, staff and students that quarantines are updated weekly. Um, we just weren't seeing enough change to actually update weekly. So we, we were doing every two weeks. And even for the vaccination rates, and even with that, you can see it moves very slowly. Um, so we're updating that every two weeks.
Thank you, Leah, your question.
Um, so my question is for the quarantines. Do you include the students who have to quarantine because of outside school exposure?
No. So these are quarantines based on, um, so it would be either they're, uh, choose to be part of test and stay. So they're in, in school, um, contact tracing. So they're either vaccinated, which they don't need to do tests and say or quarantine. Um, they can choose to be in the test and stay program or if they choose not to be in tests, they, they would, um, uh, have to quarantine.
And that's the numbers that you.
That's the number that's there.
Chosen, though they've been, is that right for quarantine?
They've chosen quarantine instead of on test and stay. And these are unvaccinated, um, individuals.
Is there a way to get the numbers? Because I would find it very interesting to see how many kids are actually quarantining, um, because there's so much outside of school. It's what, I mean, like what Dr. Parkinson is kind of alluding to, to around, that there's a lot of exposure outside of school. This school, is there a way for us to see how many are quarantined in general?
So I can ask our contract, contact, contact tracers to, um, try to gather that data and go back and get that. I mean, we, it's there in the spreadsheets. It's, it's a matter of, you know, being able to, being able to put it together.
Six that you were referring to were only the ones who were quarantined due to test and stay, right?
Because they were in, in school contacts. Yes.
Andrea. I guess I just wanted to, to add to that point that I'm not really sure. I'm thinking about what are the presentation today from Dr. Parkinson, where you're saying that the school is a microcosm for what is happening in, in, right? So really, I think that would be proportional then. The numbers that you're trying to get at, but the, the everybody.
I was actually referring to another one that was about how we, because we, in, in the schools, we're able to watch all the mask wearing and stuff so that, that there's not as much spread in the school versus.
But I guess the, the out, you're asking for the outside because we have the numbers for what we know in-house.
Yes.
And the outside, I, I think we can just say is proportional to what is happening globally, right?
I don't know if that's true though. I don't know. That's true. Cause the mask wear, I saw that the mask wearing is really, but I don't know. Okay, maybe I didn't understand the question. I'll just say that. Yes. Okay, so.
Yes.
Any other requests for information? Got off topic there. Request for information, seeing that. Okay. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Terry, is there a second?
A second.
Andrea, a second? And it's a roll called vote, starting with Lisa.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Bill Ryder.
Ryder, yes.
Carrie Videris, yes.
Well, yes.
Andrew Vard, yes.
Leah Palmer, yes.
And now we can all put as a off throw, yes. This meeting is adjourned. Um, happy holidays to everyone and thank you for joining us this evening.